I'm Marilyn and I'm going to call the Missoula City Council Committee of the Whole meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Thank you, guests. Especially thank you, our guests from the Confederated Salish and Kootenai Tribes for coming down to meet with us. And we're very happy to be here. I have to make a very important announcement first, and that is that the folks who are letting us use their conference room have asked that we please use our posters so we don't mess up their table. So I thought I'd get that out of the way. And then moving right along on the agenda, do we have any public comments on items that are not on the agenda today? All right. Mr. Strohmeyer, thank you for organizing this meeting. And I wonder if you have any opening comments that you would like to make?
I do, but before I do, I wanted to give the privilege and honor to Louis Adams if you would like to kick us off with any opening remarks today.
Sure. We thank you for this day here. We thank you for this group here that are struggling, that are trying to make things better on this earth, not only here in Missoula, but everywhere. That's what all of us strive to do. I was asked a while ago if we were glad this has come about. I said, yes, very glad. It should have happened long, long ago because he made all of us. Yeah, there's different colors, different whatever, races, but still, he made all of us. And we should get along because we all have to live here. We all have to help each other. We all have to strive for our kids because all the creatures out there have to rely on our kids that are coming up because they can't speak for themselves out there. It's good to be here. I was asked, because this is history. We are history because of our ancestors. Where are the universities at? Right there by the rivers apart. My grandma was born there in 1800s. She died when she was over ninety years old in 1986. But she was saying that's where her dad was catching bull truck when she was born there. I was asked to come over there one time and give a talk. The lady, I told her, I'd be glad to give a talk there. I didn't tell her why until I got there. I said, my grandma was born here because these people want to know if our present people thought of the river the way our ancestors did. I told her, yes. I told all of the people, yes. I said, because this river is going through Missoula here, not only for the ducks, the geese, the aquatic life inside of the river, the elk, the deer, whatever uses it, including the people, it's life. That's how we have to take care of these things, not only the river, the streams, the springs, whatever. You have to take care of all of them. And that's why our people call Missoula in light. It's just one word, meaning place a bull truck. That's what my grandma's dad was doing when she was born, catching bull truck. That's why I'm thankful when I'm asked to start a meeting out with a prayer and give a little talk on history, I'm always glad to do that because from Evro to the Yellowstone, just selfish people stomping them. Because when we had to leave the Bitterroot and put on where we were at, that's pond area land. That was all pond area land where we're at now. Kootenays had to come from Canada. So they threw us all in one basket and called us flatheads. I don't know why. But I'm thankful to be here. Amen. Special.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Louis. President Marler, Chairman Derglow, it's good to be here today. Welcome to Missoula, Montana. Last December, as many of you know, the Missoula City Council passed a resolution that did a couple things. One, it recognized what many folks know already, but maybe we have not said it as the city of Missoula, and that is to recognize the sovereignty of the Confederated Salish and Kootenai Tribes as a sovereign nation. Secondly, we set ourselves on a path to arrange this meeting that we're having here today, which I see as a first step in a conversation to look for ways in which we share mutual interests and can work together for the benefit of our peoples who are part of our respective communities here in western Montana. What initially got me thinking about the importance of this was, and this is my eighth year on the Missoula City Council, I live just down to our east here a little ways on Pine Street. And recognizing that the land upon which I and my family live, the land upon which the University of Montana campus now sits, did not first become occupied when the Corps of Discovery passed through western Montana or the first white settlers passed through this area, but this land has been occupied by people from time immemorial. So it's important that we recognize that we are neighbors, that we share this land, the air that we breathe, the water that we drink, the wildlife, and look for ways to work together. So I'm very happy that we can begin this conversation today. What you see on your agenda are just some possible ideas for discussion points, but I see this conversation as really being wide open and free-ranging and going in any direction, number of directions that we at this table might want to pursue it. So I would be very interested in hearing the thoughts of my colleagues and neighbors and friends to the north and also my own colleagues here on the Missoula City Council as far as ways in which we might work together. And before I do, I wanted to share a little something with you all. So we have a proclamation today. So whereas the Confederated Salish and Kootenai Tribes is a sovereign nation and whereas the city of Missoula, Montana was incorporated in 1883 and occupies Aboriginal territory of the Bitterroot Salish, and whereas the Confederated Salish and Kootenai Tribes and the citizens of Missoula share a deep connection and mutual respect for the lands, plants, and animals in the Missoula Valley, and whereas the well-being of both the Confederated Salish and Kootenai Tribes and the prosperity of the city of Missoula are intertwined, and whereas on Monday, May 13th, 2013, the Confederated Salish and Kootenai Tribal Council and the Missoula City Council Committee of the Whole held a joint meeting to begin an ongoing dialogue about mutual interests. And now therefore, I, Dave Strohmeyer, speaking for John Inge, Mayor of the City of Missoula and the State of Montana, do hereby proclaim May 13th, 2013, as Confederate Salish and Kootenai Tribes' Day in the city of Missoula, Montana, to recognize the importance of this first meeting between our two jurisdictions and the city of Missoula's commitment to foster ongoing dialogue and mutual respect and friendship with the Confederated Salish and Kootenai Tribes in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. And the mayor sends his regrets that he is not able to join us this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Strohmeyer. Do we have additional opening comments? Please.
Chair, I just wanted to take the opportunity to first thank the city of Missoula for the action last fall. I certainly appreciate the efforts of the city to reach out to the Salish and Kootenai Tribes and recognize, one, the government, and, two, recognize the importance of this place, this area, to the tribes. So we appreciate that very much. We agree, you know, that the tribes and the city and the county governments have a lot of interest in common. We look forward to continued dialogue with the city about some areas of interest, economic development being one of many. Thank you to Louis for that opening prayer. You know, the elders that open our meetings always have a very good way of putting things in perspective for us, so I appreciate Louis' words. Always speaks true to the heart and brings, puts things in perspective with perspective for us. We look forward to continued discussions. You know, the tribes, the tribes always and will continue to always advocate or try to protect natural resources, but places are important to us too. And certainly the place, Missoula, is important in the tribe's history. Now, it continues to be an important place to us. We don't, because the city is here doesn't mean we still don't hold it important enough. You know, often we can drive around Montana, western Montana, many areas, and there are stories that connect us to a lot of places. That's something Louis can do, and he probably still does with his family. He connects us and our families and our history to a lot of places in western Montana. So we can share that with the city and the county and the residents down here. We look forward to those discussions.
Thank you both. Thank you, Mr. Adams.
I'm not pushing eighty, I'm pulling seventy-nine.
I like it. Just as a way of structuring our conversation, I'll keep going down the agenda. Please interject if someone has a topic that you'd like to discuss. Shared interests in economic development and opportunities for collaboration. Mr. Strohmeyer, was this, did you submit this to the agenda or was this from someone else?
I did. And by way of, I guess, kicking off this item, and I hope I don't surprise this individual, I was wondering if Alex Phil, who is in our audience here, might like to say a few words about his experience in terms of economic development, working with CSKT.
Oh, sure. A little surprised, but thank you. Appreciate it. So it's a, this is actually a really tremendous night for me and as well as everybody here. I think the storm is appropriate. There's a lot of power going through this valley right now, and I don't think that's a coincidence. But just a few words, and it's a real honor to have the folks down here tonight visiting. And I know a number of members of council have heard me speak before. But as many of you may not know, a couple of years ago, the mayor, myself, and Mike O'Hara took a trip up to Indian Country north of us. So we spent the day touring the college and meeting with President Ross. We spent the day at the college eating bison. And we spent the time touring and looking at the various businesses that you guys own, the tribe owns. And it was my goal with that meeting, or that day trip, it was like a three or four-hour trip, to impress upon various people that I respect here in Missoula, including the city council, of what a significant partner the Confederated Salish could be in terms of business development and economic opportunity. And the reason I was so convinced of that was due to the benefits that I've had over the years working with not only the tribal government, but the tribal businesses. When I started my first company here about ten years ago, you've all heard the story, one of the things I lacked was mentorship. I lacked a leader who could help me figure out and navigate the difficulties of small business in Montana. And I was at a conference and I heard a gentleman by the name of Larry Hall speak at one of these events about high-tech technology and business. Of course, he's the business manager, president of S&amp;K Electronics, a very, very successful company, employs over a hundred people, does very well financially, very great business. He's from North. Anyway, I heard what Larry had to say, and one of the smartest things I did as a startup, a high-tech startup, was get myself up to Larry's office and ask him for help. And lo and behold, one thing led to the other, and our company started to work together in 2005, 2006, 2007. And the mentorship and the leadership that he showed, and frankly, some of the wisdom that you guys from tribal council showed was really quite remarkable. That then led later to introductions with S&amp;K Technologies, the company that had spun out of S&amp;K Electronics, and meetings with Tom Acevedo and other members of that company, which then led later to an investment, an actual acquisition of one of my companies. And now, last year, the creation of a new company known as Terra Earth, Earth Sounds is the name of the company, which actually is one of the few venture capital-based investments going on, at least in Missoula right now. Not the only, but one of the few. So what we have going on, and I've shared this with Ginny and I've shared this with the Missoulian, is what I think is one of the most exciting economic development stories going on in all of Montana, which frankly is a reflection of both tribal and non-tribal capital investment in, as far as I'm concerned, some of the most high-tech businesses that you'll see in western Montana, if not Montana in general. And that, to me, is extremely exciting. I'm not suggesting it's the only way to go. I'm not suggesting it's the way we should go, but the fact that we've been able after trip after trip, year after year, month after month, to create these business bonds and basically personal bonds, which I'm fully invested in, I think is a potential example of other areas of business that could benefit from both tribal investment and non-tribal investment. Anytime you have tribal venture capital from around the country, high-tech people working on these innovations, I think represents a potentially rewarding future for everybody. And that's a future that I know that the city council is invested in and representing the people you represent, and I know it's the future that the tribal council is interested in protecting and delivering for the native peoples northwest. So to me, to sum up, just because we have a hill and just because we have some mountains doesn't mean we shouldn't be working together. Number two, there are real concrete examples of that already happening in a big, big way. And number three, given how closely we are going to become in the next ten, twenty years in terms of growth and other forms of economic development and expansion, the sooner we can have this kind of dialogue starting, and I commend everybody here at this table for having this dialogue, the better off we're all going to be in the future so we can realize those futures for our children. And that is personally gratifying to me, and I'm just proud to be part of it, just part of it. Because, again, it's a story that I think is, needs to be told nationally, and it's something we can all be proud of. And so thank you for the opportunity to share a few words.
Well, oftentimes in the past, and I think we are maybe moving away from this model, oftentimes in the past, there's been an attitude that in terms of city government and its role in economic development, we kind of create the infrastructure, we make sure this is a community with a good quality of life, and it's kind of, if you build it, they will come, approach the economic development. And that's not entirely without merit. You want an attractive community that is a place where folks enjoy making a home and doing business. But I think we've, many of us at least over time, have recognized there's much more that can be done, and I think Missoula Economic Partnership is an example of an outgrowth of that sentiment. I would certainly be interested in hearing from any of the council members or Chairman Derglow, if you have thoughts or challenges that you face on that front.
We do, and maybe speaking about opportunity, the tribes, the tribes are, I guess, the employer up in the reservation community. We have, what, a thousand to twelve-hundred employees on any given basis, so we're the major employer up there. The tribal council in the past couple of years has provided some direction to try to create a stronger entrepreneurship effort. So we're trying to encourage our tribal members to look at opportunities besides tribal government employment. We think that creates a healthier economy for us. So, you know, speaking about entrepreneurship or investment, I'm just wondering what opportunities might be afforded to, serving to a small market out there with very low income, so it's hard for folks to pursue that, pursue that on the reservation community. If we can expand, I guess, our scope, reach down into the Missoula market, maybe that creates a better chance of success for some of those entrepreneurships we're trying to create up there.
Well, we did have a representative from the Missoula Economic Partnership here. Jim, would you like to say any words?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Luckily, one of the first people I met that came to Missoula was Alex Phil, and he told me about the investment that the tribe had made in his company. So the very first thing that we did is, I went up myself and I met with Larry, and then I went and spent some time with Tom Acevedo, looking for opportunities that we could work together. So we have our own entrepreneurship programs here. We would be happy to always look for any activity that we could be doing jointly. Luckily, I'm not from Montana, so I'm not so provincial. I know that making jobs in western Montana is our, should be our goal, not just inside the city limits or in the county, because it helps all of us. So I guess our offer would be from the Missoula Economic Partnership, if there's anything that we could do to be of value, we'd like to be a part of that.
So is Lake County or the reservation part of your service area then?
They're not.
So they'd be part of the Missoula County Economic Development Corp., I suppose, then?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, not a, we just serve inside the city, but the county's a quarter.
But if I may, one thing it's important to understand is that the Missoula Economic Partnership is doing some pretty remarkable things for, quote-unquote, "the city," but it's based on investment by participating businesses, as well as the city council, as well as the county. So it's a joint investment in this organization, Chairman. And one thing that James Gronky has articulated here is, and I want to emphasize this, not to overemphasize it, but tribal council through tribal corporations have made substantial investments in entrepreneurialism that's already impacting the city. The people that you've invested in are people that I've hired or used to manage or whatever. They're here right now. So insofar as you've made investments in companies that have made investments at MEP, you de facto have an organization that's there to serve your interests because you're investors. You brought skin to the game, as they say, in terms of capital investment, which is, by the way, very entrepreneurial. So we don't have to, we can expand upon that, grow upon that foundation that's already started if that. I don't, I wouldn't get too hung up in jurisdictional boundary, and I can't go there, and we can't go here, because if MEP's doing one thing, it has a global view, but we're trying to make things real here at a local level. So think globally, act locally, and you guys are already part of it. And that's why I made such a, I made that point to James when we met, is the big thing people keep missing when they think about economic development is the role that the Confederated Salish and Kootenai have played and can play. Because again, it's just, it's such a massive resource that most people ignore or they don't understand. I think it's they don't understand it and therefore they, it's not in our consciousness. Anyway, if I may.
Mr. Taff, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was just thinking, listening to the comments. I spent most of my adult life in a very big college town called Lawson, and that made me very comfortable coming here nine years ago to settle. And it seems we eat at the table the two universities, the two colleges, the tribal college and the university, because in my view, that's where the birth of the economic development takes place. We might get into industrial stuff, we might get into retail stuff, but I think that the high-knowledge type product is our advantage, having University of Montana here and your tribal college on the reservation. So I think if we could bring them into the mix of whatever conversation we have about how we should move on economic development.
I appreciate the comments so far. Just, I'm Clayton Mack, Director of Tribal Services with tribal government, and I've known Larry for a long time, but one of the things that, you know, maybe we've done this and maybe we haven't, that we might benefit from as well, is just to start to do more to understand our structures and how we can begin not only as governments, but as economic development institutions here and there, and how to work together based on that. The more we learn about that, I think the better off we can be to begin with. So to begin with, as we look at tribal government, maybe you're telling you something you already know, then I apologize, but tribal government generally exists in two parts. One is the formal tribal government where we have all the tribal services. There are about thirteen-hundred full-time regular employees within tribal government. But as a talk economic development, none of that includes any of the economic development components that we have operating up there, such as S&amp;K Electronics, S&amp;K Technologies. And we've got a job corps center that we operate, we've got a college we operate, Mission Valley Power. We contract with the United States to operate the power utility for most of the reservations, a lot of business-type development, but sponsored by tribal government that is beyond that thirteen-hundred employees that operate all the services of tribal government. So I'm excited to hear some of this sort of opening dialogue for a variety of reasons, but also to get, in a broader sense, everyone to sort of realize and understand that as we think about tribal government, as we think about the city of Missoula in our proximity, we've probably already been in business together, we just didn't realize it from a variety of places. Not just pure economic development and capital infrastructure for body businesses or startup businesses or venture capitalism, but we share the same environment. And that environmental protection has been important to us, and we know that you've taken positions in the past to protect the environment in places and times that have been important to us as well. We see a lot of people traveling with four under license plate going from here to Flathead Lake every day. And now with the highway development the way it's been, I think Missoula has been taking part in highway, you know, operations over the years, and CSKTs have had a major role in that. That transportation corridors improved quite a bit, largely because of tribal involvement, but because of the surrounding support that we receive and continue to receive for the kind of development that the highway infrastructure made it a lot easier and quicker for us, you know, someone to hook up your boat at 4:30 in the afternoon and head to Flathead Lake, spend the weekend on Flathead Lake, and, you know, and come back down here. All of that's part of that same infrastructure. Recreation permits, we offer recreation permits, and we know that if you haven't been, if you've been on Flathead Lake or fishing on any of our streams or lakes, or you've been out hunting pheasants in the fall, or you've been hiking in the Mission Range, you've acquired one of our recreation permits, probably one of the better deals you're going to find in the region, go try to find a recreation permit and have that kind of access to those kinds of resources somewhere else for less. It's hard to find. We share residence. I know that there are people who live in the Jaco Valley who come here to work every day. We have people in We have people who work for tribal government, a few I have in mind, who I've worked with for thirty years, who live here in Missoula, traveled, worked there for us every day. So we share, we share workforces. We were talking about, sort of beginning to talk about how to think about the relationship and the crossover between government and economic development and that relationship. And you mentioned the SKC and universities. Within the last week, I just spent an hour or so at the Bureau of Economic Research at University of Montana. One of the things that we're interested in is just start to look at the kind of model that they provide for providing basic economic and social information, research, that can be used by tribal council and tribal government, and by economic development institutions that we support. Because I think we need also begin to look at some of that information sort of from a tribal perspective, develop our own data so that we can use that information for government operations, for economic development, and so forth, really understand how, more directly, what the impact is of tribal government, not just the reservation, but the surrounding communities. For counties we impact, so while we're here having this meeting, and we touch in, Missoula County, we have within the boundaries of the reservation four of the counties in western Montana, and we have had a relationship with all of them over the years for a variety of reasons. So just, just really, as I think about it from my perspective, I think about economic development as a sort of a linear, linear concept of the needs. You know, we're talking about, you know, well, but I think that in a broader sense, we've been in business together for many years, we just really paid attention to that, I think. How we foster that, how we begin to build on what we already know, understand what is already in place, and begin to build on what we already know, I think could be a really good foothold for all of the discussion that we're having. My two cents, and I supervise ten of the departments that the tribal council has. Be glad to, my phone is just a phone call away, and be glad to help you, city government, anytime. If you can't reach tribal chairman or one of the tribal council members to help you understand what we do, how we do it, and if you are interested in any kind of special government relationship, partnerships. I think there's always opportunity there, we just got to reach out and try to fund it.
Thank you, thank you so much for that. Any additional comments on the topic of economic development, collaboration?
I have one more, if I may.
You may.
Real quick. I don't know how many people were aware, but about May of two thousand and eleven, the United States Navy visited S and K College, and there was a partnership intermediary agreement established between the United States Navy and SKC, essentially to support what's called an education partnership program. And this is the first time in the United States ever that the United States Navy has entered into a program, an agreement, with an accredited four-year tribal institution, college. And that was not an insignificant event. Now, again, Larry was involved, Tom was involved, a lot of people here from the city of Missoula who supported the company were involved, the governor's office at the time, Governor Schweitzer's office. That agreement right now was, took a lot of energy to get done, and we can pick up later afterwards on where to go with that, but right now it needs some focus and some energy and some leadership. But it's a toehold, it's part of something that's national, that's linked here locally. I can help you guys revise it, just let me know. But again, that was not an insignificant event, it was the first time in the history of this country that it ever happened. And you're, the Confederated States Kootenay need to be congratulated for it, and the SKC need to be honored for the professors and students that ended up then going on and getting internships and program objectives with the United States Navy, working on our national security. So it's not just the US national security, but you guys are bringing your skills and leadership to that problem as well. And that is a very meaningful story that has yet to be told in its totality. So I just wanted to add that one little piece, okay? Thanks.
Maybe speaks to the suggestion of the university and the college to be at the table.
That's why I brought it up. So, thank you.
Thanks.
I'm done.
Mr. Strowman?
The house is full of food. I was just going to, I wanted to remind folks that there is plenty of food over here, so help yourselves.
There is plenty of food for everybody.
Yeah, anyone who's in the audience.
Please dig in.
And I guess this is an opportune time, I also wanted to see if anyone in the audience had any comments on this particular agenda.
Well, we can come back to it also. People can make comments at different times during the, during the meeting, but why don't we move on to Ms. Walkin's topic, which is item three on the agenda, discussion of how the Missoula community can engage and support its Indian population. Would you like to say a little bit about that?
Sure, I mean, I think it's, I wanted it to sort of be an open-ended conversation. I know the city of Missoula has the largest urban Indian population in Montana, and I know the university does a really good job. They have programs to sort of integrate students and help support them, and I sort of wonder, observe that, you know, the city of Missoula doesn't really participate, and what can we be doing, or how can we be facilitating or joining with other groups to help support the urban Indian population here so that folks aren't falling through the cracks? So this is just sort of, I wanted to get all of your thoughts on whether you think there's anything we can do, or whether other communities have programs that you think could be successful in Missoula, or just your thoughts.
Thinking of data, what data, I mean, I, you know, I talked about Missoula, you have Missoula County, I think that kind of problem exists probably westward for the city of Missoula. I don't know what data you have to begin to learn from. What are the things to think about while you're asking less of that question? There may be some members of the Confederated, so we should prove the tribe who live here, who are part of that community, but because it's a university community, and because it's a sort of large center in western Montana, you're probably talking about tribal members from one of the five hundred tribal nations within the United States. So I, you know, one of the questions I would have is, what's that, what's that demographic look like? And as you begin to think about that, just understanding that is going to help you start to understand what some of their needs might be. Being in a place that has been foreign to them, being here, if they're a student, they're probably pretty well taken care of. If they're not, then it's probably, they're probably always going to want to reach out and be able to know what services are available to them. I think oftentimes, especially you get into rural environments, but we experience it even on the reservation. At our home, I think there are a lot of assumptions made, that because they are tribal people, because they're Native Americans, that everything is just taken care of for them. That is absolutely not true. And I think they struggle as much as anybody. I think we do, our tribal government does the best it can to try to serve its people and its membership, but we run into a similar problem. We have the Salish-Kootenay College in the middle of the reservation, and we know that there are probably, at any given moment, between fifty and seventy-five different tribes represented at the college. And as a tribal government, we serve the members of the Confederated Salish and Kootenay tribes. Some of our programs, by nature of their funding, federal dollars, have to overlap, and we include services to other tribal members. So in a similar way, we have some of the problems there, because we have to understand who they are, where they come from, what their needs are, and be able to guide them, and provide, you know, provide a resource, at least if not direct service, be able to provide them with information. Where can I, you know, if I'm here, I'm going to say, where can I go and get information? So that I know what services are available. And a lot of people don't always need a handout, but just want to know what's available so they can know where to go get, because there are a lot of energetic people who just don't always have knowledge about what services are available. And often feel like, oftentimes will feel like doors aren't open to them, so being able to understand that, understand that demographics, be able to provide information, and understand that you're not talking about a single population of people. So if you're talking about Native Americans that are here within the boundaries of the city of Missoula, that means help. If you're talking to a member of the Confederated Salish and Kootenay tribe, that means one thing. If you're talking to someone who may be from a native, that's something else, they have different needs, different understanding, different culture. So just, it's a challenge, but I think, you know, even in our public school, we have the schools that are closest to the Salish-Kootenay College, where most of the students reside, are greatest impacted there, fifty-some tribes represented in just the school district of Lannan, or ten, that's a challenge for them. We understand the same dynamics you're, I think you mean, but those are the kind of things you have to do and think about, and try to, you begin to approach how to, how to work with them.
A directory or some kind of information, often the calls are to us at home. So if they're in Missoula, or if they're in Seattle, or if they're in North Dakota, often they call a family member at home, or a tribal council member at home, and ask what they have to say. So we had, we had those resources at hand with some of our staff, maybe we could make those connections quicker.
I'm Kate Chantley from the University of Montana. I'm a professor in Native American Studies and former chair of the department. I'm enrolled a CineBoing from the academy. And as I'm listening, and I know a lot about student concerns when they move to the city, I think one thing that's very important for the city to do, when it does its own study, for example, of housing, or landlords, and tries to protect tenants' rights and things like that, I think that those kinds of studies should have an aggregate of Native American people. So that when you look to see what kind of a job you're doing as a city in terms of not allowing discrimination in housing, that you actually have done, your studies have had the kind of data you need to draw some conclusions. So that if you make policies as a city council, I think those policies should always be careful to make sure that you're accounting for people of another kind of sort. I know that one of the things I've heard from students, they come from the reservation and they have to pay application fees for, to rent all kinds of places, and one of the things that happens is they're not really very eligible for those places. So basically, the landlords are just taking application fees from people that they could just tell them right up front, I'm sorry, you aren't eligible. So I think there are issues around that transition that Native people from all over the state make to the city to utilize, to go to university and so on, that I think that transition can be helped by your study, having the right kind of self-study.
Thank you. Additional comments and discussion?
Just under the dynamics of issue in preparation for the meeting, I looked at the census data, and there are 2.8% of the population of Missoula identify themselves as Native American. Obviously, they don't parse it by tribe, but so that's about two thousand people who are, who identify themselves as Native Americans in the city of Missoula.
Just one idea of potentially a follow-up on this topic would be to have somebody from the Missoula Indian Center come and talk to us, because I feel like we might have a better sense of the needs and issues facing the urban Indian population, and how we as a council can be able to help, or at least keep that lens in mind with the making of policies. So I don't know, Kate, if you have any suggestions of who's the best contact there to ask, since I've talked to anybody there, but.
I think they just have an interim director.
Okay, or a board member, I don't know.
What I say about the statistic, about the numbers, one of the things about Native people is they're very more, they migrate, or go back and forth between cities and reservations. They don't show up in statistics. And across the state of Montana, 11% of the K through 12 population are Native. So you could imagine, you could imagine if that's the statistic of a particular age group, the number of natives in Missoula is much higher than 2.8. That's just my sense, but it's a hard figure to get a handle on. Yeah. I would just call the Indian Center, yeah.
Dave?
Yeah, I actually did speak with folks in the Indian Center last week, and today was the first day on the job for their new director, so probably a little busy today, but there definitely are folks who we should continue to reach out to.
So Clayton, I'll hand off to Clayton. Clayton is the supervisor of some of those programs that end up providing assistance. He would be a good initial contact supervisor, what you said, and one of our tribal departments.
Yeah, you know, one thing I'm making a note of here, we could, we could go back and just pose that question to some of our specialists and say, put yourself in the shoes of our tribal people in Missoula, what kind of things are missing, what are the needs, where we can come up with that. I think this is a good question, there's no simple answer to it, it's just, it's something you just, you just sort of start knitting your arms around it, and at some point you're going to realize you need longer arms, but that's our, it is, you know, like the question, how many, how many are there, I think, especially in a university town. You know, there might be, maybe the census is saying 2.8% of the population of Missoula, and that maybe goes up and down, but I think during, during school, university is in session, I'll bet that number is higher than that. And then I'll bet it's a lot higher during basketball.
I think we'll move on to the next item, which is regarding interpretive signage acknowledging Native historical and cultural heritage. And I'm not sure who made, Jason, please say a few words.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm Jason Warner, if we haven't met. And there were really two things coming together for me that allowed me to put this on the agenda. The first is the Highway Ninety-three project, and the kind of interpretive signage and place names that I see along that road. And we paid some close attention to that, we actually used your agreement with the State Department of Transportation and the feds as an agreement to structure our negotiations over Russell Street. So, thanks for that model. But, and it's going well so far, and they, you know, lots of spoken highly of the collaboration there. But, so I've seen those signs, and obviously, we've also heard in our meetings about the names of places here. And even in your opening remarks, you mentioned, you know, this is the place of the bull trout. Well, this is not just a name, this is a name with a history packed into it, and, you know, it's certainly not as easy to walk down to the Clark Fork and pull a bull trout out as it used to be. But in that name is a reminder of what this place was, and not just that it was inhabited beforehand. So I had the idea that maybe something we could collaborate on is putting some place names and stories around Missoula, so people would have an understanding of our shared history. That's what I got.
Sure, and we rely on our elders group to provide a lot of that information. I guess the Clark Fork project would be another good example of that, if you've been out on that overlook and see the signage there, going up to the small valley there, there's some signage there. I think within the city of Missoula, there's certainly some places that have that kind of significance. We would direct that, those folks at the Culture Committee, to start that conversation with them, I would think. But certainly, they've got some experience doing it with the Clark Fork and the highway. I think they continue to do some signage. I think they continue to do some signage.
Small place names that they can come up with throughout the state of Montana.
That's great. So I should work with Mr. Adams?
Louis works with that group, but start with me, and then I'll get you to head in the right direction and get the right people to go on double decline. The two different Culture Committees, for example, the Salish-Pomare Culture Committee in St. Ignatius, and the Director of that as a program in the department is Tony Ikashula. And the Kootenai Culture Committee that is housed in Elmo, and that Director remains Patricia Kuhnur. And I can, you know, I'll give you a card here and email address, so any of these items, if you want to start with me and work with the council, I'll get you started.
Great, thank you.
I think it's a great idea. Not only have we heard from Louis today, reminders of the significance of various places within the city and within this valley, but folks should also know that, and members of the council, the city council here, are well aware that the city of Missoula is embarking on a wayfinding program to help visitors to our community figure out how to just navigate around the community. And it seems like an opportune time, actually the prime time right now, to start thinking about ways in which we want to respect and pay tribute to the Native heritage in this place through some of the signage projects that we're currently working on.
I agree. A public comment? Oh, please.
Might be opportunity for getting tribal members involved in helping you interpret things as interpretive signs begin to develop, so just a interim thought, so. I just had one more question. Mr. Weiner, you started off saying you had two things, and you said Highway 93 signs, and did you catch both things? I've got one.
Well, you know, I allowed the, I allowed the second thing to be some of the discussions we've had leading up today. But really, another thing that was a primary influence is, a couple years ago, I took a trip to New Zealand, and I spent about a month traveling around the country, and I was really impressed with how prominent signage is in Maori. And how you mean everything is in two languages, the second official language. You know, what I came away from feeling after that trip is I learned sort of more Maori in a month in New Zealand than I've learned in 10, than I've learned of Salish in 10 years in Montana. And so there's some, there's some need for us to incorporate your language more in how we do things, and certainly, place names is as good a thing as any to start with. So thanks for asking.
A public comment on that item?
I have one comment about...
No, you said you were done. Please, please go ahead.
Meeting happens once every hundred years. About 18 years ago, working with the Real Speak School in Browning, we did a project funded by NASA with a bunch of fourth and fifth and sixth grader students. I think this could be something for NUCOM to do, where we use mapping technology called geographic information systems. And the students, working with their elders, went out and excavated and found the historical place names. We created a database of all that, very similar to what you would have. And it became a way to engage the youth through schools in a collaboration between, you know, essentially Native and non-Native schools around a project, and NASA loved it. And we ended up doing place names across a whole part of the Rocket Mountain Front on the Blackfeet Indian Reservation. Easily could be done here. I think this is a fantastic idea. And perhaps with some leadership and mentorship between the university and SKC reaching into our schools, you could get the youth involved in being part of the place name mapping and as well as signage projects. It just, it worked so well, it was really fun. We couldn't do it every year, but we worked with Darryl Kip at the time, and it was kind of a great way to bring in two cultures, you know, one that looked at the world this way and one that looked at this way, and get people to look at those cultural differences and views. And if it's very easy, we could replicate it here, it wouldn't be hard to do, and we could make it work for our benefit. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes?
My name is Max Sage. I'm a member of the United Native Nation of Wisconsin and a student here at the University of Montana. I lived on the Salish Kootenai Reservation for a lot of years. One of the things I really like about what you're doing is it's educating people here in the public in Missoula about place names. I think a real miss is our children, especially non-Native children, learning the things here in Missoula about the tribes that lived here in Missoula traditionally. I know there's summer programs here. I wonder if there would be a way to collaborate with the tribe on having elders come down and talk about the traditions and the historical significance of these places at those summer programs.
Great idea. Mr. Haynes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Please sit. Seems to me like, maybe not right now, we ought to sit down, put together some kind of referral for city council on a program to support the signage thing, view of costs and priorities, where you'd start, and this kind of thing, who we work with, and who we'd ask to come from the tribal people. It seems like, I hate to just sit here and talk about what a neat idea it is and walk out, but going nothing happened. I think it's, it would be real worthwhile. I too have been impressed to drive up 93 and see all those place names there, and many, many of my, I wonder what that means. I wonder what the story is behind it, and I wonder how you pronounce it. I don't have a clue, and I've been other, other meetings, other First Nations, Crowe and whatnot, and I know there's a way to say those things. And I think it would be useful for our young in this town to learn how to say some of that. And a place to start is to put some signage up that has Higgins Avenue, and what's that, how do you say that in Salish tongue? That kind of thing. I think, I think that would be a very useful and very noble thing to do in the city of Missoula. Maybe put something together.
Thank you. I'd be pleased to work with that.
Yes?
Question of the person is, we, maybe not at the scale that you're talking about, but for a broad, Montana-wide scale, we've done, we've done a lot of work on place names. So turning that into something that's focused more at a different scale, I think would not be difficult, because we've got place name projects that both the Salish-Pomare Culture Committee have been working on for many years, and the Kootenai Culture Committee have been working on for many years. And we've also got a cultural preservation office that's been laboring with our place names, and so there's a lot of opportunity there. Some of that's already being infused to some degree within some of the school districts. So in addition to the city, it's maybe something that, as we have learned to do, whatever we can do with school districts at home, if there's an interest there, we might be the interest here.
Thanks. Yes?
Hi, I'm Weber Greiser, and I'm actually a county resident, not a city resident. So, you know, just thinking about expanding this, if possible, a little bit broader, I mean, why just focus on the city, because...
Big payment, payment salary.
But I'm just thinking in the broader sense, that Missoula County could, it seems like they could participate.
Absolutely.
I don't know how you all interact with county commissioners, but maybe too. I mean, especially if you're going after funding, do it a little bit broader, because there are lots of places around the county that could certainly be included.
Dave?
I guess, just to follow up on that, it would be, I guess, instructive for me to hear a little bit about what your interactions are with the other counties that make up the Flathead Indian Reservation. Do they generally collaborative relationships? Do you meet very often with the county commissioners, if at all? Is it? I guess I'll just leave it at that.
We've made with Lake County fairly consistently. Flathead County, I would say, a bit strained. Missoula County, I think much, much better relationship there with them. Sanders County, probably a bit more strained. Attorney water rights has affected relationships in the communities and the surrounding communities, so.
You're actually, you're actually the first one that we've really, as a city, sat down with, I mean, we've talked a little bit with some of the studies, but not nothing into the scale, or what we're looking at here, but the agreements are... Partnerships that can come out of something like this is interesting, that's why I showed up. It wasn't for the meal I ate. But I think you can, there's a lot that can be done with that. And starting off with place names and that, there's a real good idea on that. Where people actually know that there was somebody here prior to, we even have that problem under reservation. A lot of people don't know there's a reservation, and they live on, so. Whether they lock it out of their mind, whatever it comes down to, I think it is just education, really. It is for Cal Spel, I go to Cal Spel a lot, because I go to Uzera, I come down to Missoula. They just had, the college went down here and everything, you know, but it's still, people don't realize that when they go up to the lake, they're under reservation. So it's gonna, and it's amazing, it amazes you, how many people don't understand that. And it's not anybody's fault but ourselves for not trying to depict that more so.
Adding to that, for your purposes or our purposes here, just some basic historical understanding, not just some of the history that the elders can provide, but also some of the land history. I think as Ronan was talking, not everyone is fully aware of just sort of the fundamentals of land history of the Flathead Reservation or Western Montana. And the relationship between CSK T and the Flathead Reservation and Western Montana, we're actually sitting on the part of Western Montana that in the treaty could have well been the reservation. There's a story behind that, so it's important to learn. Reservation was also, Flathead Reservation was also open to homesteading, you know, you can't. So when we talk about having difficulties, the home people says, really, and you wonder why, well, there's a story behind that as well, and some history behind that, so. I'd be glad to share some of that.
Thanks. Additional comments? That's a good discussion. Dave?
Little different topic, I guess, looking back to economic development. I just wondered if Caitlin would have any insight or anything to share, since she's been chairing our economic development subcommittee?
Well, one of the more interesting speakers that we've had present to our Economic Development Subcommittee was Jay Preston from Ronan Telephone, and just talking a little bit about how he worked to provide extreme broadband to the, to the tribe under the constraints of kind of how they're funded, is partly federally, I don't understand all the ins and outs of it, but, and then they're building a big network, a Terrapop network, that will go from Cal Spel to Seattle, is kind of how I understand it. And so I just wondered if, what your guys' experience had been in terms of broadband infrastructure, and what it's been like to work with them now that they're entering the Missoula market, basically.
Broadband is an interesting challenge. I think that, and I don't have all the technical details behind how we're a telephone company, but involved in the broadband project, but they had to compete with grant process, and actually were successful in being the company to develop some of the broadband in the area there. But there's more, there's more to come. There's a large broadband, like the state of Montana is going through a project to study broadband needs throughout the state of Montana, and we've been meeting with them as well. So while broadband is coming, it's not fully engaged yet at this point, and we have had a good relationship with the Ronan Telephone Company, but we're looking even broader, and continue to have discussions with the state of Montana with their broadband project. And they, they were in our offices a month or so ago, having some initial discussions. We'll have more discussions with them over the course of the next month. And they're mostly just doing survey work at this point, so for the course of the next couple of years, we're going to see even more of that. So we're working at, we don't have all the answers that we want to get on broadband, but we're looking at it. So it is, in addition to everything else on our projects.
How many providers do you have of reservation, different broadband service providers? Or is, I don't, we have like Century Link and Optimum and Blackfoot and...
We got those all on commercial.
You have all the, for commercial. You have the commercial.
I'm close, but I think we've got to...
There may be other providers, I think, that one in helpful companies, a major one, Blackfeet maybe, but in terms of just telephone providers, there are several, Blackfoot, Ronan, maybe some other telephone providers as well. But I don't know if they're all working on the broadband, but certainly, personally, I don't know if Blackfoot is... That's something we could put together.
Jason, and then Dave.
Thanks. It was interesting to hear that you operate the electric utility. In the context of this, certainly if you feel like your broadband needs aren't being sufficiently met by the options that are there now, the most successful model for community broadband, sort of being initiated by government, is often pigbacking on electric utility. Lafayette, Louisiana is sort of the biggest success story in that regard of really using it not just to make sure that everybody gets the access, and how can you, you can't do much of anything if you're trying to apply for a job or anything if you don't have access to the internet, but also in catalyzing economic development and putting in place networks that, you know, draw commerce in, because it really is necessary. With, you know, the, the regional network that's in place gives us a lot more capacity in Western Montana than we need right now. And, you know, what we're thinking about at the city is, how do we get people from that regional capacity to their homes or their businesses? We don't have an electric utility, but that you do, you know, I think opens up an interesting possibility for you. So I encourage you to learn more about Lafayette and see if that model works, or something that's a hybrid with it.
Sure. And I think we're, certainly along the 93 corridor, we have a different challenge than Sanders County, so. We've got that to deal with too. Very, very few people, and much less, less infrastructure on the eastern, western side of the reservation than we do up at 93 Quarters.
Right, right.
Mr. Haynes?
Thank you. Clayton, you said they were in your office talking to you, you think those are, can you say who they are, or is that...
Yeah, it's, well, there's a, the state is contracted with a small, the individual we were talking about, I happen to know him because he used to work for us, but the state of Montana, they contracted with a small firm to do some survey work throughout the state of Montana, and they were just visiting with us. And I can get a name if you want, but it was essentially the state, Department of Commerce that did the, did the contract with them.
I would be interested if you want to comment or not, but sometime on your relationship with the various companies that do business here in the state, the smaller, Blackfoot and Ronan, and some of the other companies like that. I worked with Lincoln telephone company, and I'd be very interested in knowing what your relationship is with some of these other companies. More of a curiosity, if anything.
Mostly as a consumer. We don't have the telephone utility themselves, so we're a consumer. But, so as tribal government goes, we'll work with whatever service provider there is within the different parts of the reservation. So it's, it's however they're divided, so we kind of follow whatever their division is, Ronan Telephone Company, Blackfoot Telephone Company, there may be a couple of others around the fringes of the reservation. And then everyone's got a cell phone, so.
Mr. Adams?
Yeah, you know, when I mentioned Missoula, place of Bull Trout a while ago, there's a lot of other names right in, in this area. You take Rattlesnake Canyon up there, our people call that Nmquench, just the way it's shaped. There was a trail that goes over, there's a saddle over there, you can see from here. You go over that... You go over that and there's a little lake there. That was a trail that went over to Bonner in that area. And this other one over here, Patty Canyon, that was, our people use that. That was a trail that went to the same place. Right up ahead of us here, Hellgate Canyon, our people call that Saint Lemp, and we didn't use that, because once upon a time, Blackfeet used to wait there and ambush some unknown, some tribes from the coast that were going to buffalo country that were unaware of. So, our people, see, the Blackfeet and the Crows were our traditional enemies, so we didn't, we didn't want to mess around through that Hellgate Canyon. That was Saint Lemp, the place of ambush. So, we had these two trails that went there. That mountain right there behind the university, N'maquench, that's a humpback, N'maquich. And right there where the university was, Saint Quet. Place, if you was going to stay there all summer, it was Saint Quet. If you was going to be there just a few nights, Saint Stichton. But that's, all these places, these names here have, have names to our people. So, right down there by Lolo, well, Lolo itself is Tumsumchee, no salmon, because the coyote tried to get salmon over here for the Bitter, Bitter River, and he didn't make it. So, people call that Tumsumchee, no salmon.
That kind of history, I think, would be remarkable if we could put that into a signage program, with places marking the city to talk about that.
I was invited to Lola Hot Springs here a couple of years ago by the Missoula Sheriff Department, who was having a two or three day conference there. And they invited me up there. They heard about me knowing some of the history. So, when I got up there, they had a big table like this, people sitting there, visitors, but they had a chart on the wall. And it was, that chart showed how that Hot Springs was, how it got there, how it went down clear into the earth, I forgot what geological stuff, you know. And when they asked me to talk, I said, "Your chart don't mean anything to my people." I said, "It's all wrong." And they kind of snickered, you know, and they knew I was kind of joking through. But I said, "The coyote made this spring." I said, "Because he was told by the creator at once upon a time to go over this mountain and go on the other side and get some salmon, bring it to the bitter of side and put them in that river. And the creator told him, and then, 'Don't stop. When you go over there and get your fish, you come back, don't stop anyplace.'" Okay. Because the coyote, he was, he was kind of a smarty at times. He was wise as all get out, but still, at times, he was mysterious too. So, he went and got the fish he needed, had a big pack, come up, before he got to the top, man, he was tired. "Oh, I'm going to sit down a while. He won't, he won't mind or he won't know." But when he sat down, his pack broke. All this salmon took off, back down the other way. But he got to hold the last one by the tail, couldn't hang on to it, and it got away, down to Beargrass it went. But when he come back, he got chewed out by you know who. He said, "I told you not to stop." Well, that bothered him for quite a while. So, he thought, "By golly, I'm going to do something for the, for the humans that are coming," because this is what he told him. It's for the humans that are coming, they want to put the salmon in this river. So, he said, "I'm going to have to do, do something for the people that are coming." So, he went over there, and he made that spring. And he said, "This here is for the people that are going to be here. It's going to be hot, and it's going to be good for their minds, for their bodies, for their heart, for everything. If they're here in the wintertime, they can keep warm. If they're, even, no matter when they're here, it's good for their being, for their body." So, that's why the coyote built that. That's why I told them, "Guys, your chart is all wrong."[1420.12][1420.12](Laughter).
It's hard to top that, but I think we've come to closing comments.[1429.12][1429.12](Laughter). Who has a story that can top that story? General comments, information sharing, closing comments?
You can't, you can't top that, and there are, there are a lot of places in this area that have stories. And we would, we would ask guidance from the elders as to what stories that they would want to put on the signage down here. They would provide that direction to us. So, I think it's important that they're part of the conversation when we talk about signage here. They've done a great deal of work on that, and which ones they want to put down there, you know, would be up to them. We take their direction on it. If you want to get a chance to see some of the stuff they've done, the Clark Fork stuff is just up to, just up the river, some really fascinating work that they've done, get a chance to see that. Again, just wanted to thank you for this initial meeting. Thank you for reaching out to us. You know, it's a, again, we speak to places a great deal, and Louis shared, you know, how we tie that in. So, this place is important to us, and we've long wished for our history to be shared down here in this community, because we see a lot of, a lot of stuff happening here, and we think our, our history is important here, so thank you for reaching out. And hopefully, that continues in the history that we've shared here, and not all the stories to be shared, but there's, there's a lot of, a lot of history that we could share. And I think it makes it a richer place, certainly if you start including that history as part of this community.
I'm very grateful that you all came down, spent time with us.
Here's...
Yes?
I was going to say, there's new history here too. Walmart's got a lot to do with it.[1551.12][1551.12](Laughter). Start with new stories.[1554.12][1554.12](Laughter).
We're going to try to use Walmart now. It used to be Kmart, now it's Walmart.
Mr. Strohmeier?
And a couple, or several items to leave with our guests. These are, I believe, all signed by the mayor, a photo book of the Missoula Five Alleys area, so a little token from us here. Probably not nearly enough native language included in this, but nonetheless, a small token of our appreciation for joining us today.
We're so very happy that you came. Thank you. I think I'm legally obligated to ask for more public comments. I think everyone's had a chance to talk, but please speak up if you would like, please.
I guess I'll, I'll take a moment. It was related to the economic development, but the question of environmental perspectives, I think, is of concern to everybody here. I'm David Moore. I teach at the University of Montana in Native American Literature in the English Department, and I used to teach at SKC for a lot of years, and I'm resident in both places, so I speak for both. And I'm really grateful for this meeting from both councils. And it strikes me, in talking about economic development, in terms of the power that the city council can plug into by recognizing the sovereignty of the tribal council, there's some important leverage, which I imagine will come into operation in the future. I'm thinking of the coal trains controversy and the question of moving environmental polluters through our mutual territory, and what the city council might need to say about those issues. I'm sure all know that there's a lot of municipal activism around the country in terms of making decisions on the part of communities to offset environmental pollution against federal and state regulations, where the local communities can take power. And with the city council invoking and recognizing the tribal council, that's a mutual force, I think, that will bear on the future in some very important ways for our communities. And I hope that perspective can stay right in the forefront.
Thank you.
I also have some guests from the city. They can work for you to hand out a lot of stuff.
Very thoughtful of you.
Again, thank you for...
Can I unfold one?
You can.
Thank you so much.
Give me one of them.[1762.12][1762.12](Laughter).
Right. So, I think...
That's quite a collection. We have different tribes.
I think we'll be adjourned, but please stay and eat more food, and we can visit. So, thank you. We're adjourned.
Landman Spessia.
Sure. You did all the work. Write an email after.
We can get a phone number. Oh, really?